Anton, are you able to read the time in policy procedures real quick?
Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click the raise hand icon by their name. When recognized by the chair, address comments to the chair, remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand icon after speaking. Presentations must keep under 10 minutes. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meetings.
Can we take roll, please?
Okay, when I call your name, please say here. Uh, Kikuni Agard? Okay, Rodney A Wong?
Yep.
Okay, Charmaine Duran?
Here.
Diane Noi?
Here.
Okay, Brandon Lee? Okay, Heidi Weber? Lawrence Miyazano Jr.? Okay, Daniel Smith? Nathan Takaguchi?
Here.
Okay, Tony Velasco? And Larry Vray?
Here.
We have 10, that's quorum.
Thank you. Public safety, Honolulu Fire Department?
No one's here.
Okay, Honolulu Police Department?
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay, yeah, Lieutenant Glenn Iwaki, District Three, Pro City. I'll start with the reported incidents. So this is comparison in December 2024 to January 2025. So motor vehicle deaths was nine, went down to six. Burglaries was nine, down to seven. Deaths was 25, went up to 26, and car break-ins were, was nine, down to four. Total calls for service in this area, 1,535. And total calls for service in the entire District Three in January 2025 was 5,191. The safety tip of the month is always be mindful of your surroundings and keep your valuables out of sight. And also, I just wanted to address, Charmaine, I got your, your email about the, that Palisades Children's House area. So if I'm not mistaken, did you guys see the, the speed trailer there? Did they put it there? It was over there? Okay, okay. And then we'll add a, a project to go address this, you know, I'm sure it's speeding to coming down, but U-turns. I guess people are doing donuts at the children's house. And they're making two turn lanes at the crosses when there's just one. So we'll address this as well for this month, I guess for March. And then we'll report back at the March Neighborhood Board meeting for that. Yeah, and also, I know there was the complaint on the chickens, but I believe our community policing team took care of that. And they, they really put a stop to it. And I believe someone came and picked up the chickens. So that, that was from Mr. King, I think. So that, that was taken care of as well. So if there's further, now we know kind of how to handle it and who to call. So if there's further, you know, complaints on more than two chickens, then we know how to address it now. So we got the perfect section to call to take care of it. But that's all I have.
Any questions, board member? I can't see if anybody has questions there, so Anton, you gotta, you're gonna help me there.
Yeah, my hand raised.
Go ahead, board member.
Yeah, so Lieutenant Iwaki, yeah, thank you very much for the report. In regards to the donuts, you know, I noticed that it occurred like a couple of months ago. And then it looks like in the past, let's say a week or two at the most, new set of donuts, so to say. And just kind of scary because it was done right by the entrance area to the neighborhood church. So if a car is coming down pretty fast around the turn, having, having, you know, the, the donut markings at, at that point, I don't know if they can stop in time. So it'd probably be a pretty horrific crash.
Yeah.
And in terms of the chickens, you know, and behind my yard, I mean, I guess do you have slings? So I see 10 more. Roll it around.
Email me your address and then, and then G Iwaki@Honolulu.gov. Email me your address and yeah, and we'll take care of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to go there and then traumatize it because it's actually kind of cute. G Iwaki@Honolulu.gov, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And the donuts, do you know if it's happening overnight? Is, is it usually, you think it's like midnight hours, one in the morning?
Uh, no clue.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, you just see the markings, yeah?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, the, the fresh ones are right by the entrance, which is kind of scary.
Okay.
Because if you go in like about, because I can make the turn at 30. And then by the time we get to the entrance, it's, it's, you know, it's easy to wrap up at that point, yeah? And then, you know, and then that's just my car rolling, you know? So you can imagine if they're speeding, oh my gosh, they're not gonna stop.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, we gotta find out who's doing that.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anton?
Yeah, hi, Mr. Iwaki. I was just wondering again on that speed sign that we put up a couple of times on Noilani and by the Highlands Intermediate. There was, wondering, some parents were wondering if you could put them by the back entrance to the Peaches Elementary School entrance?
Okay, back entrance of, where is that, sorry?
Oh, my, my.
Back entrance of?
Peaches, Pro City Highlands Elementary.
Okay, I'll go find out, as long as our community policing team is, you know, takes care of the trailer, as long as it's not like a steep downgrade where that trailer is gonna, you know, just in case where it starts to roll away. As long as it's kind of flat, then we can put it up there. So I'll go ask them tomorrow morning if they can do that.
Yeah, there's a flat section out there, right at the entrance, on the back entrance. There's a flat section.
Okay, then I'm sure we can put them, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we only get one, so we, you know, we're trying to balance them out, but we will get it out there. So yeah, as long as it's possible, we, we can do that.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Sakamoto?
Yes, Vice Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Lieutenant, thank you for your report, Donald Sakamoto. I live on the Windsor side, but I have issues with unruled vehicles on weekends, especially this past Sunday, a vessel came after 12:30, called 911, and they were heading back to Pro City as well as some motorcycles going back and forth. Also, solo patrol folks are dealing with speed, high speed, nosy racing vehicles and motorcycles, especially on the weekends, it's, it's getting terrible.
Yeah, we, we recognize that all the districts, they, they drive through all the districts. This happened, going back to the history of how this happened, this happened during COVID. I guess it started to form during COVID. We cited every single one of them during COVID. And after that, it just grew, they started going to other districts, meeting at the, the commissary, meeting out in Wahihua, meeting out in Kapole, and several areas, including our Koala Street longs there. And yeah, it's, it's become a, a, a big problem. So we do still nip at it, I would like to say. And our solo bikes are out at night, as well as the traffic team, as well as our people too. And they've been getting cited, our officers arrested too, I think, this month, which is, I know it's not, doesn't seem like a lot, but as well as the solo bikes, traffic division, we've been, they've been getting arrested, but that, the group is pretty big. And I know some is like imports, some is American cars, and some is motorcycles. So we do enforce it, but it, it's become a big problem for us as well. So as far as enforcement, it's being conducted, but we just, we gotta figure out a way to put a stop to the entire this racing thing.
Okay, I appreciate what you folks do in District Three. We, I appreciate it, and the residents can just, I appreciate because there is impact that's in the morning, especially on Sundays in Chango Church. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Trevor Ray?
Yeah, Vice Chair, Lieutenant, did you get the email from me from Thursday, Friday? I had to ask you about if you had any information to update us on the hit and run incident that occurred at 3 o'clock in the morning on Monday or Tuesday night?
Uh, you know, I, I didn't see that email, but hit and run incident?
It was reported, it was at 3:30 in the morning. A young lady was hit by an unidentified driver in a green sedan that was heading up towards Pacific Palisades. It happened at the intersection of Wymano Home Road and Comomai Drive. And I really thought to the.
Okay, I can.
Yeah, I really, I was getting, you guys said fine because it, you know, he's in the choke point, and it's just a matter of time before we're gonna see a damaged, set green sedan.
Right, 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 yeah. So I'm sure if it happened at that time, it was my officers that responded to it. So I'll look into it, but as far as hit and runs, we do forward that to the traffic division. So I'm sure it's in the traffic division's hands right now as we speak. And they, they have a follow-up detail that does all the, the fled scene, it's called fled scene follow-up detail, and they do all of them, they're in charge of them. So they, they're assigned it to a detective, and that detective will be assigned to that case. So let me look it up, and then I can email you back and follow up on that. And they're the ones that go look for the vehicle, try to run it, find witnesses, you know, surveillance footage and stuff like that, so.
Right, okay, well, appreciate any feedback you can give the board, because we got a lot of board members from Palisades. But, you know, we're on Nextdoor website and we're collaborating. But the other thing is I collaborate with Donald Sakamoto, what he, I can attest to the racing. I do want to raise the flag for you. There's been a change in the pattern of, of racing. You know, normally, I'm, I'm having our Fridays and Saturdays, they're doing it 1:30 in the morning. They're going pretty much, Kamano is the starting point, and then they're heading westbound. And we're talking about high RPMs, I know they're doing over 100. But now I'm hearing it out at 8:30 at night. I'm so, see, when they didn't have a lot of people on the road, I can understand that they're looking at their risk assessment of getting caught. But right now, I'm worried about people getting killed. Because you know, when you have senior citizens, and I in particular, when I got a vehicle that passes me on the right, I wasn't prepared for it, scares the daylights out of me. I just want to let you know, you need to get your patrol out 8:30. And I think the good news is nobody's going eastbound because of all the roadwork.
Right, right, no, I, I hear you, Larry, yeah. No, you're right, Larry, and we do have to do something about it. And like I said, it, it's growing, so we gotta put a stop to it soon, soon enough.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to help you guys as much as I can. I'm just shooting ideas forward, and I'm willing to be part of your community policing team to help you gather evidence, because I got all the capability. So anyway, one, other one thing, Vice Chair, I want to thank HPD. Last week, Sunday, I ended up calling, it was a burglary at the Hayward Funeral Home. I was there checking the cemetery out, and the homeless had actually broke in. And I alerted the owners because usually when the, when the, the homeless get into buildings, they're usually burnt down later. So I was trying to prevent that, but it was a 15-minute response. 911 was just overloaded. I, I didn't get to, get to really explain to dispatcher for 15 minutes, but your guys were on the scene in, in less than five minutes. They were all professional, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Anton?
Brief, brief comment. I think for racing, maybe we should ask the legislators to provide something for forfeiture of the vehicle. You know, because a lot of these guys are repeat offenders, right? So anyway, that's my suggestion, thank you.
Bye.
Lieutenant, so yeah, thank you very much for the area policing in terms of the HOV and zipper lane. You know, I, I seen some citations, you know, going out like that. But you know, see, as I mentioned earlier, more than 90% of the people in there are single riders, yeah? What's really scary is that in an afternoon traffic, I, Pro City area like that, you got these motorcycles driving right on the line, and they're kind of zooming past, and you gotta figure like seven lanes, yeah? And these motorcycle riders are right in the middle of traffic on the line and just zooming past us at least twice our, our speed. It's kind of scary. So if somebody makes a left or right turn, you know, and gets in front of them, it's, it'd be a pretty horrific crash. I don't know how you're going to mitigate something like that because, you know, unless you got somebody watching above, and then you gotta cut them off at, you know, one or two miles later, because those bikes are really fast, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, no, I see them too, they're, they're lane splitting, yeah? I think in the mainland, it's, it's legal, but over here, it's not. But yeah, we gotta depend on our solo bikes to catch them because there's no way we can catch them, because we're stuck in traffic while they're suing.
Right, right.
So, yeah, but yeah, I'll, I'll let Traffic Division know that, I, I'm sure they know about it, but I'll remind them that, that is a concern in Pro City a lot, yeah?
And then, like in the case of Trevor Ray's situation, where, you know, he was on hold for not less than 15 minutes and 911, i- is there a line that they can call the Pro City Station?
Yeah, um.
Chair.
But usually, yeah, usually you want to call dispatch because the dispatcher inputs it into a system, and then, then they dispatch it out. So the call taker will input all the information, and then they'll, they'll broadcast it out to the officers. But if you call a station, yeah, usually, like, some people at the station might say to call the, call the dispatcher, right? But yeah, our number is 808-723-8800. So that's, that's the number to our station. And our, our desk sergeant that's manning the, the station will answer the phone. So, yeah, so, yeah, i- if it's an emergency, can't get through, then I have no problem calling this number too. And from here, the, the desk sergeant can, you know, call out to the officers if there's any officers available, or they can, they'll tell you that, oh, it's, you know, right now it's rocking, there's no one available, but we'll get, you know, somebody there. So, but yeah, that is a number to call, 808-723-8800. And you can reach our station directly over here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for everything you do for the Palisades hit and run. The feedback that we've been getting over the last year while we do with all of these different issues is that this seems to be a more recent change. And while behavior and patterns can change, there is the belief that this might be a very small group of residents, maybe newer residents or new driver residents, maybe. And that if perhaps we can try to narrow down like this most recent hit and run, that we might be able to solve some of the issues without very expensive improvements. But, thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you so much.
Then the donuts, too, yeah, um. If, you know, the, the communities are eyes and ears, like, if we're there, they're not gonna do it. So if I post my officer in the bottom with their blue light on, they're not gonna do it. But yeah, if the community sees it too, if they can call us and let us know, then we'll pay them a visit at their home. So that's the best way that we can probably catch these guys, you know? So yeah, if the community, and if anybody witnesses this, gets, gets us a license plate, that'll help us a lot.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Could you come to the microphone, please?
Hello, guys, it's Tom. No longer from Palisades, live in Waikele now. But I wanted to follow up with Lieutenant here. Back in November, you, I think it was the same Lieutenant, but mentioned something about a website where we can see activities such as robberies and things like that in the neighborhood. And I believe Heidi asked a question in regards to can we see traffic accidents on that same website? Just to get an idea of continuous accidents in a particular area. Again, going back to Palisades, it's that hairpin turn and seeing so many accidents there. It's like, how much more do we need to see there, you know? And what can we do to stop having accidents? You know, they, we've proposed putting speed bumps, pig signs, numerous things, and nothing is going on. So if we can maybe provide more data on what's going on up there, that'd be beneficial to fix things, Mahalo.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, no, yeah, the, the website's crime mapping. I guess it's contracted out, so when they did the contract, it didn't include traffic accidents. So that's why there's no traffic accidents on there. And it will be, it would be very beneficial to have it on there. But I believe, yeah, that's, I guess, the administrative part of HPD that runs that and, you know, does all that contract and stuff like that. So I'm not sure, but when I did reach out and asked about it, they said they can't add it because of the prior, I guess, contract that was signed with the crime mapping that the company sold. Yeah, but yeah, for Palisades, I know it's frustrating. We'll, we'll do projects. I'll let our acting major know that it is a big problem over there. So we will have projects, you will see officers out there, you will see officers citing people, and hopefully that'll curb, you know, the speeding a little bit. Yeah, you know, it's, it's not an excuse, but we can't be there all the time. We, we'll try, you know, put that speed trailer out there as much as we can as well. But yeah, it is, especially if you're not used to Palisades and you're coming down, people do speed. Even when I, I first drove there the first time, coming down, you can pick up speed and, you know, go over the, the center line as well, you know, when you're making that, that turn. So it is a dangerous area over there. But we'll do our best to try to curb that and whatever enforcement we can provide or whatever, you know, ways that we can do to slow people down there. Yeah, I don't think, Larry, did you ever look at putting those, those bumps over there? It's probably not advisable, yeah, to put the bumps on that turn? Because then you would have to slow down a lot, and then you have a hump to go over. So yeah, I don't think that's something that can happen, but.
Chair to answer that question, and plus the Palisades family. I think that if there were some type of rumble strips, you know, like alerted on, on Nimitz Highway, like when you get the lows, because you got a turn coming up, maybe if you can put either the lines or the, the, just the rumble strips to remind people, get off the phone, you got the hairpin turn, very accident prone, that's a, that's something.
Or even delineators in the middle, yeah? You know those delineators, the, the yellow ones?
They won't last long, they'll be gone, they'll be gone the first night.
Yeah, but, I mean, yeah, but it'll, it'll help, right? I mean, I know what you're saying, but yeah.
Yeah, and.
But yeah, that's one of those, yeah, city councils attending, but that's something that I'm sure city council can get, you know, do a proposal and get it up there, so.
Yeah, Charmaine, I'll let you take the lead for Palisades, what you guys want to see. But, but, but anyway, Lieutenant, the one thing, I just lost my train of thought here. Darn it, oh, the guy in a way talked about the donuts in the road. I've got them all up around Kamano Street, and it's all happening at night, at 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. Nobody in their right mind's gonna do donuts, and you got traffic all the time with Palisades. So they're gonna do it. But anyway, I'm out, thanks, Chair, Vice Chair.
All right, fire?
Hello, Christopher Cervantes with the Honolulu Fire Department from the Pro City Fire Station. So regarding information previously requested, Neighborhood Board asked at the November meeting 2024, is there a website that the public can go to see where pedestrian accidents occurred in their neighborhood? I think 2038 gave a response, so a report. For more information about incidents, please go to the HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov. Click on the News and Info tab at the top of the homepage, then scroll down to the Fire Response Map where the public can search by incident type, date, address, and/or agencies. Regarding statistics for January 2025, for fires, we had two structure fires, one wildland brush fire, six nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, four activated alarms with dope fire. For emergencies, 134 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian. For motor vehicle crash collision, there was eight, mountain rescues two, ocean rescues zero, hazardous materials incidents two. And nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. The fire safety tip and announcements for February 2025 power outage preparedness. Prepare your supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera, contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Prepare your family, check in with family members if anyone relies on medical devices requiring power. Ensure you plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water, set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during an outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics, unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down power lines, always assume lines are energized and dangerous. For more safety tips, visit honolulu.gov/DEM. Learn more about power outages at hawaiinelectric.com/stormcenter. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, 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 I am. Okay, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, one second, hold on. Word member Velasco?
Yeah, Pro City Neighborhood Board Number 21, we'd like to present a posthumous recognition for firefighter Jeffrey Fiala. I am grateful, appreciation for his truly outstanding service, leadership and support to the Pro City community, as well as the City and County of Honolulu. During his tenure as our firefighter, was stationed at the Waiao and Kakaako Fire Stations. His dedication, courage, and made the City and County of Honolulu a safer environment. We will always remember firefighter Jeffrey Fiala. I'll give you this black word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public testimony, anybody wants to provide testimony? Please come up to the mic or raise your hand.
Hi, guys, Tom again. Um. I'm confused as to budgeting for works around the community and for the city and all that. Because for the past two years that I've been attending these meetings, we've been talking about speed bumps, we've been talking about hazard signs, animal signs. And time and time again, comes back saying, oh, that sounds great! And then nothing gets done. Most recently, I was up in Haleeva after the hairpin, after the Snake Road, you make a right in Wailua going to, going to. Going towards Haleiwa Town. They're adding speed bumps. I'm just curious as to how was that community able to get that done? And we can't get that done here. I've been told, ah, we're, we don't have the budget. Don't have the manpower. I don't know, other communities are doing it. Why can't we do it here? So. That's my question. Mahalo.
Chair, I got a response for Tom.
Okay, I'm sure very.
Yeah, Tom, uh, what I understand is. That when you see speed bumps go up pretty quick, those are state roads. Uh, Director Sniffen is uh, got his policy going where he's got the funding to be able and a contractor that that can provide immediate support. Regretfully, it takes for DTS a longer period. You notice it takes a long time for city. And then for city, normally it's after somebody just got wiped out in a in a crosswalk. So that's all I could say. Uh, it'd be nice if the city can improve their time in this for those. Uh, requirements stated by the neighborhood boards. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Andrea, go ahead.
Aloha, mai, eh, Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, and members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. My name is Andrea Diaz Machado, Peleki Kena, President of Hui Makua O Kapole. Representing the parents and families of students who attend Ke Kula Kai Opuni O Kapole. I'm submitting this testimony in strong support of Resolution twenty twenty four eleven to support Hawaiian immersion education. This resolution is a recognition of our language and a celebration of our of our commitment to preserving our Hawaiian identity. I would like to acknowledge Pearl City Neighborhood Board Vice Chair Charmaine Duran for introducing this important resolution. To remind Hawaii that our language is alive and well. With over twenty thousand speakers in Hawaii today and thousands more to follow. Ke Kula Kai Opuni O Kapole is addressing the critical need for immersion education. In the Eva Moku Land District. With a clear vision to expand into a full K twelve school. An effort that would also serve students in the neighboring Waianae and Waialua Land Districts. In fall of twenty twenty one, a group of Makua parents. Mobilized our Waiao Kaiopuni community, that's in Pearl City. And advocated for a secondary Hawaiian immersion school. To address thirty six years of lack of access to this level of education within our community. Consequently, Ke Kula Kai Opuni O Kapole opened its doors in school year twenty three, twenty four. And currently has grades seven and eight. With its first high school class set for the next school year. I am humbled to serve as a founder and leader who brought Ke Kula Kai Opuni O Kapole to existence. The need and demand for a K twelve Kula Kaiopuni in the Eva Moku are clear. With a one hundred and twenty eight percent increase in student enrollment at Kapole from year one to year two. Forty two percent of current Anuenui students. Who travel to Palolo come from the Eva and Waianae Land Districts. Over seven hundred school age K through twelve Kiki reside in one of the four Hawaiian homestead neighborhoods in Kapole. With more expected. As we strive to enhance and expand these educational resources for our Kiki and O P O in the Eva Moku. We seek your support in establishing a K twelve Kula Kaiopuni. In the next four years, fully aligning with this resolution's acknowledgement. Acknowledgment. Mahalo Pihau for your time and attention to this important matter. Your support and advocacy for Hawaiian immersion education is vital for preserving our culture. And nurturing the identity of the next generation of Hawaiian speakers. Together, we can ensure that the language and culture of Hawaii and more specifically the Eva Moku thrive in perpetuity. Iola ma'ou ka'oula aloha Hawaii, ama'ou ama'ou. Let the Hawaiian language live forever and ever. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions? If you could just stay online until we're finished with the resolution, just in case something comes up. Okay, um, is there public testimony there?
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Bullahan, uh, Palisades resident. My wife and I, we just got back in two thousand and eleven. Uh, this, my question I have is, uh, why isn't there a left arrow? Uh, from Palisades going to Pearl City High School on Waimano Home Road and uh, Komo Mai. I mean, since we got back in two thousand and eleven, I think we've witnessed about six accidents. Uh, in that intersection and then especially in the morning during school, I see kids walking across the street and and. Because there's no left arrow, people are taking a lot of chances trying to to do shortcut coming up this road also, which. Well, I see a lot of people walking their dogs and people speeding up here just to try to to alleviate traffic going to Pearl City High School. So. A question I have is, uh, why, why can't we put a left arrow there since there are left arrows on the other three roads? And um, they're very easy to to program and it's just just for safety, just uh, to alleviate. More accidents that that will happen. That's that's the question I have.
Um, we agree with you. We've, we, I think most of the board members here support a left-hand turn. Uh, some board members also support a right-hand turn and hopefully we'll be able to figure out um, why things are moving. Uh, really, really slow, so we'll continue to work at it. And please make sure you sign in so we can share any kind of information we find out with you in the future. And thank you so much for coming. Any other public testimony?
I just wanted to respond real quick um, to Ken as well, because that is an intersection like. Charmaine said that we are all very concerned about. I walk through there or bike through there every day. And I hear what you're saying, and I am trying my best to be heard over that issue. Um. One of the things that's going to be happening in Pearl City this year is my understanding that they're going to be working on the Complete Streets Plan. Along Waimano Home Road, and I believe it's supposed to come as far as Komo Mai Drive. And so hopefully, at that point, we're going to see some fixes along there um, and several other. Side streets that come into Waimano Home Road. But I would just encourage everyone here who is interested to sign up to get the Complete Streets. Updates online. They will email it to you and that way you'll know what's going on and can um. Throw your two cents in whenever they have the public testimony for these areas. Thank you.
Any other public testimony? If not, we're going to move on. All right, the first item on the agenda is a presentation. From the Red Cross.
Aloha, everyone. My name's Mary. I am the volunteer recruitment specialist for the American Red Cross in our region. Uh, I came here today to chat with you a little bit about um, the importance of joining if you can, spreading the word if you can't join. Uh, and kind of a little bit of what that process looks like. Uh, we do have a presentation that's getting pulled up right now. Uh, so uh, again, I'm Mary with the Red Cross. I've been with the Red Cross about five years. Uh, basically what I do in our community is I go out and I network and I do a lot of posting online and things like that, spreading the word about our mission. Uh, and if you can go to, oh, he's not all the way up yet. So that's me, and then you can go to slide two when you're ready. There we go. Uh, so this is our mission statement, and I kind of am going to break it down for you a little bit. So the mission statement is the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering. In the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And where I fit in in that process is the mobilization mobilization of the volunteers. We're a ninety percent volunteer-run workforce. We're not part of the federal government. We're not funded by the government. So when you hear things about Red Cross, we really are talking about people in your community that step up when disaster strikes. And step up before disaster strikes to prepare us and then respond when needed. So our region, which is the next slide that's up here, is, oh, you can go back once, sorry, thanks. Uh, so our region includes all of Hawaii, Guam, Northern Mariana Islands, and also American Samoa. We're the largest region in the nation. Uh, but in our region, we do four different things. We do disaster services, which is that preparation and response. We do services to the armed forces supporting our military. That goes all the way back to the founding of the Red Cross. We have volunteer services because when you have thousands and thousands of volunteers working together, sometimes things happen. Uh, so our department is basically the HR department for volunteers. We do the recruitment and gate um, engagement recognition and sometimes HR issues that pop up. And then you guys are probably all familiar with training services. One thing you may not know is that the people that teach CPR, first aid, and AD and then in the community are actually trained by Red Cross National. And they are independent contractors that go out and teach those classes in the community. So it's not employees like me that do that. They're hired independently. Um, so we'll go to the next slide. Thanks. One thing you might not have noticed on there is that we don't do blood services, right? So you hear a lot about blood drives, that kind of stuff. All of that is handled by the Blood Bank of Hawaii, and that also goes back to our founding in in Hawaii um. Back when the Queen actually was involved with this stuff. So. I'm gonna move along because we only have a few minutes, but we have a lot of available needs, right? Our most urgent ones are going to be those disaster response needs. So those are going to be what we call gray skies roles. That's going to be things that happen when we have a major disaster like the Maui wildfires, the fires you saw in LA, hurricanes, lava flows, tsunamis, that kind of stuff, right? And the issue is, is when we get hit by one of those, people say, I'm here to help. Where do you need me? And it's already too late by then. So the mission that are the message that I want you guys to understand and maybe take back to the people that you know is that we need you to step up now. So that you can take the training so that when we do get hit, you're able to respond right away. Um, we also do have disaster preparation side, which is obviously preparing for disasters before they happen, but part of that preparation is also. Training yourself and your community members. So up on the screen, and I think you can probably see it if you're virtual as well, those are some of our most needed positions. And go to the next slide. Uh, here's a little bit about how to apply. Uh, you can scan that QR code that is on the screen. It'll take you to our application process, but basically we take people thirteen and up. Um, thirteen to seventeen will have parental consent forms. And eighteen and up, you're able to do disaster response. If you're the kind of person that wants to travel, the Red Cross pays for you to respond to disasters across the nation. So we will fly you there, house you, feed you, all the things while you work, as long as you're willing to go for a two-week time period. Uh, and there's also day-to-day roles that are not disaster response. So. If you know a student that needs hours for school, someone that just moved here that uh, is looking to make friends, somebody that just retired that wants to stay busy in retirement. Those are all great people to refer to me. Next slide. All right, so there's my contact information. I'm gonna have him leave that up there for just a second while I say one last thing. Which is that the Red Cross does um, free smoke alarm installations in the community. So we'll come to your house or. If you know anybody that doesn't have working smoke alarms, even if you have smoke alarms and the batteries are dead and you need a freshie, the Red Cross will come there and do that. Um, I don't have a a thing that you can put on the screen for that, so if you're listening, the phone number to call is eight zero eight. Seven three nine eighty one eleven. And if you're here in person, there are flyers at the back that you can grab that have the QR code for that. It also has the link to apply if you would like to volunteer to undo those installations. And we work with the Fire Department pretty frequently doing those. On average, the Red Cross responds to a fire about every four days somewhere in the islands. Um, and so we are basically the second responders. Those guys come and they put out the fire, and then the Red Cross steps in and helps to support you. That's it for me tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair Veray.
Yeah, Mary, Larry Veray here. I want to thank you so much uh, for your volunteer leadership for the Red Cross, for our area. We really appreciate it, and I really hope that you get the volunteers you need. And also, uh, I want to acknowledge my good friend Craig Nea that's sitting in there in the board. Uh, what um, under your mentorship tonight, and Craig is one of our Pearl City volunteers who recently deployed twice to the mainland during the uh. Hurricane disasters and Craig uh. Craig's bringing a lot of knowledge, wealth, expertise, and creativity and ideas to the Red Cross. That's all I got, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I was actually supposed to pass to Craig so he could say something about the logistics team if there's a little bit of time for that, but. He is one of thousands of amazing volunteers that step up to the work. Thank you, guys. Any other, any questions? Is there time for that? Come on up. I'm gonna pass to Craig for a second to speak.
It's okay. I'd I'd like to preview an issue that hopefully we'll be bringing to you, we meaning. Uh, Chair Veray and I uh, will be bringing to you to the board um, in in future session, but uh. Mary's quite right that I'm uh, one of the volunteers coming out of Pearl City, and I've been to uh, a couple of the disaster responses. And it's an amazing thing to see um. People that are just utterly in need uh, being uh, served by an organization that is largely volunteer. And one of the things that we need to do is prepare, and logistics is one of those things that that really. Is if you don't, if you don't think about it when the skies are blue, when the skies are gray, it's going to be too late. And one of those things is, where do we shelter? Um, so one of the things that we've been doing during January is going around to schools in the uh, Oahu area. Looking for facilities that are um, able to be used. But you know, as soon as uh, things get a a little bit back to normal, people want to go back to school. People want to be able to use those facilities for their original purposes, and then we need a secondary place. So one of the things I'm uh, talking with Larry about is maybe identifying some alternative facilities, some secondary facilities. Like maybe the Sears uh, that is now not being occupied or the uh, Kmart out in Salt Lake that's not being occupied. So we're going to work on a project. We're going to get our ducks in a row so we can maybe put a resolution together to maybe call for something like that. But that's, that's an issue we'll bring to you uh, in the near future. And I can't uh, I can't dump uh, uh, what Mary said enough. Uh, please volunteer, please encourage others. That maybe you have influence with uh, to volunteer. It is a great thing, and uh, yeah, they they will, they will take you. To places that you have only heard of, uh, right, uh, to respond. So thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Right, moving on to board business. A resolution supporting Hawaiian immersion education. Was somebody going to read that, or do you want me to just to do it? Okay. A resolution. Supporting Hawaiian immersion education, whereas Article ten, section four, the Constitution of the State of Hawaii requires a state to promote the study of Hawaiian cultural, history, and language, and imposes on the state. A duty to provide for Hawaiian education program consisting of language, culture, history in the public schools. Um, and then it goes on, explains the history of the program, and it says, whereas Kapole is an emerging new employment center for central and Me'over residents. And for the demand for um, Hawaiian immersion schools has grown. And it it says, be it resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board supports the establishment of additional Hawaiian immersion feeder schools for central and Me'over students. I think second resolve is to amend our legislative priorities for twenty five, twenty six to cite this resolution. Move to approve.
I'll save it to the mic, Andrew.
For two more, uh, second.
Discussion? Any questions or comments? Can you take the role, Mr. Wu?
Okay, uh, when I. And, Andre.
You have a discussion item. Andrea.
You're muted.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know I was muted. Um, I don't know if it's the right time. I just wanted to mahalo. The board for this resolution and for this opportunity. I might be too early for that, but yes, just. Mahalo to everyone for um. Hearing this resolution and for um, yeah, to Vice Chair Duran for. Um, putting this forward in front of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. We're deeply appreciative and grateful. Mahalo.
Roll call, please.
Okay, when I call your name, please say yes, nor abstain. Kikuni Agard?
Yes.
Ronnie A Wong? Charmaine Duran?
Hey.
Guy Noi?
Yes.
Brendan Lee?
Hi.
Okay. Heidi Weber? Dan Smith? Okay. Nathan Takeuchi?
Yes.
Yes.
Tony Vlasco? And Larry Veray?
Yes.
That's 10 in total. This motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is 2025 city budget priorities for Pearl City. I'm not sure, so I'm gonna see if anybody from the city is here. Since we do have people from Palisades and the wider Pearl City community, if somebody wants to do a brief 411 on budget priorities for Pearl City. Like the city council or the mayor's office. If not.
Gene, Gene's here. Do you have anything?
Gene Albano, Director Designate of the Department of Facility Maintenance City in Kalihaunolu. I am sorry, Vice Chair, but I did not hear your query very well in the back.
Okay, on our agenda, we have, and we sent an email requesting that the city administration do a really brief 411 about the priorities in the budget and maybe the budget process for especially for Pearl City, if that's possible.
Okay, I will take that under advisement and I'm sure I will have an update next month for you all. I did hear the constituents concerned with traffic calming measures in Pacific Palisades. So I will certainly bring that up to the Director of DTS and see what can be done moving forward as well.
Okay, Director, could you do me a favor and just stay right there? Okay, so.
Can I do my report then?
Well, hold on, one second, yeah. Can we move to defer 2025 city budget priorities until next month? The next item on the agenda is the next item on the agenda is an update of Pearl City traffic improvement request from this board, which we've had. Just so the board knows. But I think in total, this board over the last several years, three years has adopted eight different measures and discussed everything from the U-turns on Kamamea to rumble strips and left-hand turns at least 40 times. So almost every single meeting. And we've adopted so many measures and haven't really heard much back. But before you respond that, respond to that, I want to give one positive thing. Thank you for being patient. We actually did get some positive feedback from DFM. I believe DFM, who is working to put in school signage for Palisades Elementary on the Maoko side because there isn't any right now. There's only school zone signs on the Makai side. So that's positive. And while we hold out hope for some lighted cross signs, you know, this is a step in the right direction. So that's positive and we're gonna keep, continue to track that. So August will be, May will be a year since we made that request. So we're hopeful that in that time, we will at least see a school zone sign. But with that said, do you want to share or update us on anything you see that you've heard the members of our, our community? I have also compiled all the testimony and comments that we have received. And it's pages and pages long and that is on our Google Drive.
So it does sound that many of the concerns are traffic related and therefore I will try to request that a representative from DTS be at next month's board meeting to address any of the concerns that have been already brought up and any prior resolutions that you feel the board has not gotten a responsible response at this point. I'm, I'm happy to hear that the department I gladly represent has addressed some of the signage. And it's a testament to the, really the men and women that work for the Department of Facility Maintenance. So thank you for the compliment.
Questioned?
Okay. Hi Eugene, good to see you.
Likewise.
I, I will say my apologies for not making it last month. I did have a personal matter that was important to me and I do appreciate your grace for allowing me to attend that personal family function. Thank you.
I appreciate you telling us, brother, really do. So we had a question from Tom and Larry also. And also Officer Osaki about the U-turn down by Children's House. So if I'm not mistaken, on the North Shore, on the edges of the road, is that come under your jurisdiction? Is that state?
That would be state.
Yeah, there are some, I call them notches or rumbles on the side of the road.
On the edging, yeah.
Yeah. So would something like that work?
Don't want to speak on behalf of DTS. That is something that they will analyze. And if it makes sense to address traffic calming measures, that can be brought up. I feel like it's important that DTS representative come and dialogue with constituents as well as the board on specific matters that address traffic.
Yeah, I mean, like I understand, you know, Larry's concerned with the rumble strips and the round spots. You know, in wet weather, those things are dangerous. It's almost like, you know, if anybody ever ran over a snake stateside, you know, that can be dangerous too. But I think on the North Shore, it's done for the reason of being that if they start to nod off a little bit, yeah, wakes them, wakes them up. So something like this around that turn would probably wake them up a little bit. So just, you know, something to consider.
I would take it back to my.
You're a man. And as far as those lighted crosswalk signs, I talked to June over there because we went on to the base down at Pearl Harbor and lo and behold, they had a solar operated crosswalk sign with lights that went around the perimeter of the sign, which is really was good. I guess somebody had gotten hit over there, but and June is supposed to let me know who the vendor is. So I'll let you know who theirs one is.
Any other questions, comments?
We're good.
I actually have one more since Tam is here. We've had many, many discussions in this meeting as well as in the mayor's town hall about animal crossing signs. And there are several examples throughout the island on city roads, not state roads. So do you have any idea why that has been so difficult to achieve?
From what I recall, it is setting a precedent for the city that has not installed those type of animal crossing signs. And it is also not a standard sign per se that would typically be installed. But again, don't shoot the messenger. I, I think it's important that a DTS representative come and explain it much more articulate than I am doing it right now.
We have one more, Charmaine. Um, so to the gentleman who came tonight and asking about the left turn yellow sign. And I think we discussed this one time before as far as with the traffic control signals. And you were guys were gonna get some new ones installed. And I think I asked you, can I do the same to the old ones?
You know, in many cases where there is re-signaling that's being requested, there is going to be a traffic study that does, they'll put those sensors to determine traffic patterns and then determine the re-signaling. That's my general understanding that is what will likely occur before any re-signaling is done. But don't hold.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that if DTS does come, they should show us where on the list. We've been complaining about that intersection up here for, before, before my term, before my term and, and I think it's mentioned three years that, you know. Maybe we'll have a city council candidate who will get it done. I don't know.
I will promise you I will make that a priority since me becoming the director and hopefully continuing as director that I will make that a priority for next month.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait, hold on.
We'll talk soon later, yes.
Board member, you know.
So Gene, I think last month's meeting too, I brought up the thing about removing the crosswalk, yeah, for Nanakai Street on Waimea Home Road because somebody coming down at approximately 30, 35 miles an hour, they take a step on into the crosswalk. They're not gonna stop. And what's even worse is that nobody respects the, that intersection anyway. So, so you can't, you can't see anybody who's coming out from Nanakai going westbound in that crosswalk. And I think I brought this up more than, before COVID, by the way. And at that time, they weren't calling it complete streets. They were calling it smart streets when it first came out. So if you get back. Okay.
Yeah, I, I gotta agree with him because I did that the other day. And I came down across the intersection, Monalua, and right when I got to that crosswalk, I remember one guy said, I said, oh, take it easy champ. But because the longer you get into the light, the faster those people get going over there. So, and like he said, to remove it would be a good thing because if I'm not mistaken, years ago, down by where the skate park parking lot is, right before the bus depot, there used to be a crosswalk that was over there and it got taken out. So probably the suggestion would be you should take out the one from Nanakai and reinstitute the one that was farther down. Right by the skate park because that one was there. We had two, you know, marked crosswalks and they took out one. So, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do. I mean, I think they'll feel safer on the latter one down below.
And I will reiterate what board member Weber said. There will be a public workshop or public outreach with the complete streets design that's gonna likely come out. And if I had to surmise, perhaps that's the reason that they have deferred some of the measures that have come up. But I, I would strongly suggest when that workshop comes up that all of these concerns are addressed at that time. We'll talk later. Thank you.
All right, moving on to government reports. And if you haven't, please visit Complete Streets. The projects that are in improvements identified for Pearl City are pretty clear. And this board has taken positions against several of them and submitted testimony multiple times. So there's lots of information in maps. Please visit that. Office of the Governor, Mr. Hig.
Hello, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and members. I wanted to highlight just one thing that the governor has been working on recently. It's one week now. He signed Operation Hire Hawaii. This is to help federal workers who have lost their jobs. So they can get a state job pretty quick, a conditional offer within 14 days. And if anybody's applied with the state, it takes longer than 14 days to get a job. So this is kind of a big deal. And they're looking for, you know, engineers, conservationists, nurses, IT professionals. So a lot of the federal technicians who are being affected, that's a big deal. We also share our newsletter in the, in the board minutes, so please take a look at that. I got asked a lot of questions last meetings. I wanted to address those first. Vice Chair Duran, you asked about the homeless outreach coordinator not having good contact with DLNR. And so I, I did send the email. I didn't get a response. So I owe you something. Before the next meeting, I'll make sure that, that they touch base and that they're sharing information, which was your point. Chair Veray, you asked about DLNR using drones. And so I got a great information that I had no idea that DLNR had this capacity. So one of the divisions, Department of DOFA, it's the wildlife division in DLNR. They have a drone pilot. He's licensed. And they actually use the drone to survey invasive species, native species, habitat, condition, infrastructure, wildfire response, encroachments and unauthorized use. It's not his sole job. It's an additional duty. So that's not the only thing he does, but they do use that. They do use drones. And then you also asked about the wildfire prevention. The DOFA and DLNR has access to the live cameras and I didn't know these existed. It's at alertwest.com. Live cameras set throughout the state that agencies use to track wildfires. Live cameras and it has, anybody has access to it. DLNR does use those as well. There's a lot of questions about steam, stream debris because we're being threatened by a storm that was coming. So we had a lot of questions about that. Board member Yinoi asked about the river near the Children's House. So I did ask DLNR and found out that was more county property down there and some other landowners. So the state didn't have control of that. Chair Veray, you asked about the Waialua Stream being backed up. I brought that up to the attention of DLNR. And there was also a question about, let's see. Oh, okay. I got a great response. I'm sorry. I'm scrolling in the email because I want to get it right. There's the bridge on the Makai side of Kamamea Highway that's still, if you follow Waialua Stream, it passes, you know, the the rail and then it goes past and it gets close to the bike path. There's a stream over there and Oahu District just procured a contractor. So that, at least that one will be fixed. I'm still finding out more information of the one by the rail. So I'll get you that information. But yeah, that, that addresses the questions I was asked last meeting. If there's any questions for the governor, I can take notes here. And then get back to you next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair Veray? You're muted.
It helps if you push the button. Yeah, Jeff, thank you for coming back with that information and if you can put me in my email, put me in contact with the DLNR reps for the drone. I would like to personally work with him to try to do a surveillance of the Pacific Palisades wooded area there. So we can identify all the homeless encampments and then go ahead and put a plan of action to get them removed. And lastly, this is not only for you, for the governor, but for all our legislators. I'm greatly concerned with the, with the immigration enforcement that's going on right now. I totally support going after illegal migrants that have come in and have caused crime. All those need to be removed immediately and I like President Trump's plan, the way it's going. My only concern is since a lot of the decisions have been made at, at the executive level, there hasn't been much thought in this. We need to protect our migrants that have come here on a, on a worker's visa. And I know what's happened. Some of them have loved it so much here that they've extended those, went out of the, the extended time for the visas and are still here. We need, we need to act on this from the state and work with our Congress representatives to come up with a plan to extend the normal six month working visa to maybe a year or two years. And then put together a plan of action for them to become American citizens legally, the way the process is, it'll give them time to work it. But, but not to apprehend them and take them out of, out of our state. If they all are working, they're paying their taxes, they're, they've got products that they're producing and others, we need to keep them. But if they got felonies, they're gone. But if they got felonies, they're gone. There's only one strike when you're, you're that. But please bring that to the governor for me. Thank you.
Last thing, if I have, if I can say, American Red Cross. So I was in the military, I was deployed. American Red Cross do messages for the active duty when they're deployed to let them know if something bad happens. It's, it's a resource families got back home, they can reach out and let their service member who's deployed anywhere in the world know about an emergency. So they do that. I also worked the Maui wildfires and I worked with Red Cross Public Affairs personnel. And the amount of people that they had, it was amazing. Not from Hawaii that flew in to help. So if you do have the opportunity to volunteer, it is a, I'm going to share it on my social media for the Department of Defense for the state of Hawaii because that was, that was a great pitch. And I just wanted to put my two cents for support of the American Red Cross. No further questions?
I have, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, man.
For the fast track, do they need, do, do people need from federal who are wanting to move from the federal or have to move? Do they need like a letter or is there like a website that they can go find out what they need? Or, you know, do they have to wait to, you know, get terminated? Can they choose to move if they're already feeling like? If, is, do you know that? Or is there like, I guess, a website where we can?
I don't, but I think there's, there's resources online and I'll, I'll share that with you, Chair Veray. We'll get that in the minutes.
Thanks, Jeff. You know, in the, in the last couple of meetings, Vice Chair Rand was asking about emergency exit routes for Pacific Palisades. So I kind of looked at, you know, Google Earth and looked at the ridge and the plateau that Palisades was built on. And as far as I could see, there was probably nothing out there that we could, you know, that was accessible, easily accessible. So my question was, the contractor, and I seen Charmaine's, that article that she put inside, they have the original contractor. So if we were to look at the, the way this, this community was built, would Army Corps of Engineers, could they be asked to look at some way how they constructed the road to get to Palisades by going down one side of the mountain side and then up the other? Would we do it on the other side of the Palisades community? So, but if we could, you know, get the Army Corps of Engineers to help this, help this community out because as far as I could see, man, there's nothing else out there.
Okay. You know what? I can go ahead and ask them. Since I'm state of Hawaii, do you have a pretty good relationship with the Corps? So I can go ahead and ask that question for you. So about the, why was it designed that way? And is there any plan?
Well, I think that was his only access, the way he could get up. He came up to Pro City, went down one side of the ridge and then up the other side. And when I looked at Google Earth on the other side, I looked at down, you know, it, it's a pretty good drop if you want to go through Waiana, you know? And there, there is some, but to me it looks like, you know, he planned that route up there. So the only other way out would be another one on the other side to get out the same way. And that's all Kane Hall Road. So in actuality, the way Monalua Road ends, if you follow that road all the way to Waiana, you can see where the Kane Hall trucks used to come down the road. And I know that for a fact because we used to dodge those rascals when we lived up here. Yeah, Monalua Road didn't always look like that.
This chair.
Okay.
This chair. Um, just for information, the developer did not make Komo Mai Drive when up Palisades. Pacific Palisades before it was developed was a pineapple plantation. So that, that road existed there prior to, prior to the, the development. So the developer didn't plan and make that road there. It, it existed already because it was a pineapple plantation before they sold it to the developer to develop.
Thank you. Mr. Sakamoto.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation, my governor. Two questions. I have friends and colleagues that are disabled or elderly. The living Pro City expressed some concerns about the government changes with the Trump administration with Medicare, Medquest, how's that going to be affecting Hawaii and Section Eight, they're on Section Eight and they worried about using the federal funding for rentals and Section Eight. Can, any word about what's happening from the governor's point of view?
Yeah, that's, that's a federal question. What I can do is I can ask if there's any state resources that can assist those who are affected. And I can get that information by next meeting or email it to the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casey Abe.
Just a minute. No, I'm trying to get my screen up here. To. Let me, I'm difficult here. Let me try to sit down. Good night, Shane. Okay. Hope you can see my screen. Good, good, good evening, Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, members of Pearl City Neighborhood Board, Casey Aron from the State TOT Highways Division. Last month's meeting, I mentioned about receiving an email by Senator Alafonte about the overgrowth interest on the Kalanui Street overpass. During my field inspection on February seventh, area had been cleared and the overgrowth cut back. But unfortunately, I noticed the graffiti artists has left their marks. So I'm working with our maintenance crew to remove the, remove or paint over their graffiti. Last month meeting, last month, I received an email from Senator Alafonte about a homeless encampment along Kuleana Road, adjacent to Monalua Road near the border water supply station. During my field investigation on February seventh, I noticed the homeless camp had moved out, but left all the trash behind. During my field inspection on the fourteenth, our homeless coroner and his contractor had cleaned up the trash where the border water supply had trimmed the trees. Also during my field inspection, I noticed the graffiti and the damaged fence along Kuleana Road. So I'm working with our maintenance crew to paint over the graffiti and repair the damaged fence to prevent the homeless from sitting up camp. Working with our district maintenance, we reached out to Hawaiian Telecom to have them replace the covers of the utility boxes along Kamau Highway westbound. Right after you passed our Zippies. During my field investigation, I noticed that a meeting fence just passed Kahuna Street intersection across the Goodyear Tire Shop was damaged. And also the main fence along the Hilli Gas Station just passed Waimea Home Road intersection was also damaged. I'll work with our maintenance crew on repairing the damaged fence. Our maintenance crew are continuing to address the artwork of those graffiti artists. But unfortunately, we have a lot more graffiti to address. In situation where graffiti artists leave their artwork on signs or use stickers, it will take our maintenance crew a little longer since they need to use a lot of elbow grease to slowly remove the graffiti and stickers without damaging the sign. So we want to thank the neighborhood board and the public for being patient with us. And finally, during my quick field inspection this morning, our landscaping crew were working diligently on cutting back the overgrowth along Kamau Highway. It should be done with the Kamau Highway area within the IA and Pro City Neighborhood Board area within a week or two. On behalf of the highways division, I apologize. We are not addressing the overgrowth on the shoulders and median areas of the highways and freeways like the Pro City on and off ramps. Due to manpower shortage, our maintenance crews' first priority is to address safety areas that affect the driver's sight distance, followed by pedestrian sidewalks. We are in the process of hiring private landscaping contractors to help address the shoulder and median areas. I also like to apologize for the major traffic backup that occurred this past Saturday on the H1 freeway going eastbound. Unfortunately, there was a miscommunication with our contractor, as mentioned by our director on the Saturday evening news. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Before, before we get to questions, could you, I know you've answered this before, but one more time since it was on the agenda. Could you report on what happened to our request for a U-turn along Kamau?
Oh, what, a U-turn on Kamau at Keisha Road? That's the one that I think a board member wanted to have three left turn lanes where, no. Where.
That one too, if you know, but I think this one was, I think they wanted a U-turn. And board member Lee or someone else might remember, I think it's near Hawaiian Electric.
It's the Waialua Power Plant?
Oh, Hawaiian Electric, yeah, that's, that's, that's a, a tough one there because there was an agreement, from my understanding, that with Hawaiian Electric, that we would not allow U-turns by the Hawaiian Electric. This is where if the board still wants us, wants to pursue the U-turn at the Hawaiian Electric plant, oh, I highly recommend if the board writes a letter to our director and have the elected officials talk to our director because that's something beyond my control because it occurred with our local people, I guess you could call it.
Adam, Chair. I, I do remember this and I thought that it was later corrected that there was no agreement with a private company for public roads. Or has that now changed again, that there now was once again a private agreement with a private company for public roads?
Okay, again, I can go follow up and follow up and check that out again and report back, but I know my understanding was we weren't allowing the U-turn there. We did allow a U-turn at the other intersection further down. But I can go check.
Right. And our, our original question was why was U-turns not being allowed there? It's gonna be the presentation that was given to us by your department showed a large truck making an illegal U-turn over there. And originally it was said that there wasn't enough radius for them to make a U-turn over there. But in the picture that was presented to show that it couldn't be made, a large truck was in fact making an illegal U-turn there. So there was enough radius. And then it was stated that there was an agreement with Hawaiian Electric, which the board asked the question, who authorized a agreement with a private company for public roads? And then the following month, they came back and said that there, there was a mistake stated, there was no agreement with Hawaiian Electric. And then again, they were saying there wasn't enough radius. And once again, they showed the same photo of a large truck making an illegal U-turn, proving that there was enough radius for a U-turn to happen. So yeah, if you're going to come back to us again next month, can you further clarify? Was there or was there not a private, an agreement by the state, because that's a state highway, with a private company? And if so, this board would like to know who made that private agreement because I don't believe that's legal. And then address our continued question about allowing U-turns once again that were there before. For, and the other point that was made by the department was there wasn't enough line sight looking west. And then in the photo that they showed from a dash cam of a car, you could see all the way to where the shopping center where Flamingo's used to be. Showing that yes, there is in fact enough line sight to make a U-turn. Because if there's enough line sight to make a left-hand turn, then there's enough line sight to make a U-turn. Either there's enough line sight to make a left or there isn't. So. All of them, Chair. We look forward to the follow-up next month.
Okay. Chair Veray.
Yeah, Vice Chair. Oh, yeah. Brendan, great point to bring up. And Casey, I agree with Brendan there. You know, I find it kind of odd to have an agreement between a private company, but, but two issues. Number one to talk about is what just talked about those U-turns. You're still desperately needed by the community. It's my analogy that if you have to make a decision to make a left turn there, it's authorized. It's the same decision that you make for a U-turn. There's plenty of clearance and I can tell you, I see two hundred to three hundred vehicles doing U-turn, illegal U-turns every day. And, and of course, you know, with lack of enforcement, they're not worried about getting caught. But the thing is though, those are people don't want to drive two miles to go do fast food. And I'm one of them. And I have to drive all the way down to, to Holly, Mohalo area where the gas station is and try to make a left turn there, which is really tough because it's, it's a congested area. Not like the other ones that have the speed bumps coming in front of them. So anyway, that's one. The other one too is those fences are being cut by the transients and homeless. Those are the areas you got to fix. I got the same problems at the cemetery. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Oh, yeah, Madam Vice Chair, have a comment or a question for Casey?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, Casey, so those fences that are being cut by the Old Sears Distribution Center, right before that across some HEI, it's kind of dark over there and a lot of those transients walk along that line. So is there any effort or are you guys going to put in any lighting on that, that side of the road? Because sometimes when we go through there, it's hard to see them walking along. And also too, from what Brendan was saying is, you know, I got some classmates who also live in that Waialua area behind Zippies and they're still a little upset that when Hart ran the rail through there, that they blocked off their road where they can't get, the only way they can get onto Kamau Highway is to turn right. They actually want to, you know, go out and make a left turn. And I understand, you know, with all the pillars over there, also to the line of sight is not good for them, but you know, they express their, their concern for that, why they can't, you know, two exits out to make a left. And as far as that Acacia Road one, I looked at it again and yeah, you would have to delete a lane that turns left into Home Depot, which I think wouldn't be too much of a, you know, crime. Because as far as the amount of cars in, on either direction, the one going into Home Depot, it, it wouldn't necessitate a, a double lane over there. A single one would suffice.
Sure. Again, I will work with our traffic police to see if that's feasible.
Thank you. If it's okay, since we have some residents in the audience who asked direct questions of the city, I was going to move up Councilmember Okimoto's report since they might have some information to offer.
Hello. This is Aaron with the Office of Councilmember Okimoto. The council member wanted to thank everyone for coming out to Islands Intermediate last night to the town hall. It was pretty successful there. The city council had its first meeting twenty twenty-five on January twenty-ninth. They held a public hearing on Mayor Bungiarde's appointments and reappointments in the city departments. I also considered a, a few following bills and resolutions. The council member Okimoto introduced resolution asking the city auditor to conduct a performance audit of the fire plans review revolving fund. Bill nineteen relating to housing, it's going to establish a resident preference in the city housing programs. Resolution twenty-five dash three reaffirming the city policy that the municipal solid waste landfill should not be located in proximity to underground drinking water sources. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five requesting the city administration to submit the updated twenty twenty-five local hazard mitigation plan to city council. Now, we did meet with DTS last week to try to get some, some answers for, for everyone there. They came with a, a few updates for us and apologize if these are some retreads, but they're going to, installation of curbs and delineators along Omaka, Omakua Street to help curb speeding will be incorporated under DDC's rehabilitation of streets. PH twenty-five A project, Lahua and Fourth Avenue. PH uh twenty-five A project, Lahua and Fourth Avenue, they're gonna be adding delineators to uh strip road extensions and medians. Uh transportation and engineering, uh DTS completed their investigation regarding the intersection of Waimana Home Road at uh Kuahaka Street and found that warrants found that warrants to justify the installation of an always stop or traffic signals was not met. DTS is still working on the study for Makaiya Street and uh Ukuwai Street, um raised crosswalk requests. Uh the Pearl Pearl Harbor Historic Bike Path Improvements Project, uh demonstration projects uh to upgrade path from asphalt to concrete and install lighting from Best Buy area to existing bridge, it's about seventeen hundred feet. Um contractors received DOH permit approval in July twenty twenty-four. A demolition of the existing asphalt bike path began February tenth, twenty twenty-five. The bike path will be closed until construction is complete, anticipating uh completion in August twenty twenty-five. Uh Transportation Engineering Division Phase Three, uh they're installing the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at Waimana Home Road and Omalau Street. Uh contract is being processed currently and construction is expected to begin June twenty twenty-five. Uh Transportation Engineering Division uh Phase Five, uh a road diet on Kahoua Mana Street uh between Monolawa Street and Ho'olea Street, design contract is being processed. Uh traffic signal, uh uh Koma Drive and Ho'olea Street, they're adding pedestrian crossing on the fourth leg. Uh as for the intermodal connectivity, uh which focuses on enhancing the uh the multimodal access to rail stations. Uh the current active contracts, including projects at the following stations, Pearl Highlands and the Pearl Ridge stations. Pearl Highlands, uh the project involves pedestrian bridge. They expect that um the design will be completed in twenty twenty-seven and the construction will start in twenty twenty-eight. And in terms of the uh the bus stops there, they're gonna construct a new bus stop shelter at the Kamakama's Highway opposite of Poot Moi Street in Pearl City. Um welcome to take any questions?
Uh thank you for that. Is it possible for you? It doesn't have to be a complex email for you to send some of that in writing if you haven't already. So that it's a lot of, a lot of.
Yeah, I know, it's a lot of information. Oh yes, I can send that tomorrow for you.
Um I have one more thing. Did you guys get the um budget calendar yet?
We did get the budget calendar and that's sitting on my my desk as we speak right now.
So when is the uh deadline for first uh CD proposals?
I need to get that to you, but I know that we are doing the um um the the budget briefings next week.
Yeah.
On it, think it's two weeks after that, if I'm not mistaken, but I can definitely put that in the email as well.
Right after that, right, like right after, right? So um the reason we had on our agenda today the updates was because the next time we meet, it will probably be after the first CD one is due. So um if you could share with us when those deadlines are so we can work at it. Um and thank you so much. Any questions?
Cheverie, I have a question for Casey, I'll make if he's still on.
Any question for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
One.
Hold on, hold on, one.
Okay, uh now it's now it's now it's working. The um I I wrote it down at the meeting last night, but uh Pearl City High School could use a swimming pool and maybe something like the um the deal that was done, the joint city and DOE uh project in Kahuku, but perhaps be um uh duplicated for Pearl City High School, there's a lot of, there's a lot of land up there and um um commuting to uh corp is uh not a very good solution. Thank you.
I'll bring that to the council members' attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Uh Aaron, thank you for your report. Uh thank you for giving me a call about the pedestrian bridge. I'm just worried about the timeline, but uh you know, with everything going on to um in the Washington DC about funding, uh hope that money is gonna be vested with the city so they won't take it away if the project doesn't uh beat uh the federal government, you know, with the new administration uh regarding the uh yeah, okay, regarding with the.
I was just saying, so the director told us, they did ask about the federal funding. Uh he said if it's already been basically um uh earmarked to be spent, they're gonna have a harder time taking it away. We'll see, uh you know, they're doing a lot of things out there, so you know, we just gotta kind of sit sit tight and wait pretty much, but sorry about that, go ahead.
Yeah, and then for the state DOT, I attended a federal transit administration webinar, they were talking about federal funds like uh transit improvement program tip and uh I I I'm on the Waho Metropolitan Planning Organization with Larry Beer. And I called Mark Garty, Executive Director of the Waho Metropolitan Organization, asked about that and he said to express concerns to the state DOT and the state uh legislature as well as the federal government, what's going on with the tip money? I I don't, I hate to see uh any projects delayed for a state because we we need these improvements on the highways, transportation, you know, thank you.
Sure, I'll go find out uh what's the effects of the uh President Trump's uh program one, the federal highways program.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Senator Waikai? Senator Elafante?
Great evening, Chair Verre, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board and the community, I'm Brandon Elafante from the State Senate. Uh I did pass out a few handouts, I do have Faith Kintuo from my staff online, so she'll provide the link in the chat. First is our monthly news report and it highlights a few updates of what's been happening at the Capitol as well as some bills that I've been advocating for. And then the next sheet is a press release on uh fireworks fireworks legislation that has um and some of them are moving in in the Senate. Um that has to do with enforcement and penal increase in penalties and changing definitions, so you can read more about that. And if Faith, if you can also share the link to to that press release, that'd be great. So I'll I'll stand on that written report and you can take a look more about some updates there. Uh we are marking halfway through the legislative session uh before bills cross over from the Senate to the House and then vice versa from the House to the Senate. Um what I will mention is I know there were some questions about speeding and enforcement from Board Member Smith and members of the community. So I did introduce several pieces of legislation as it relates to uh increase in uh penalties to Class C for three or more offenses of excessive speeding and forfeiture of the vehicle. Um that has a hearing uh before the Committee on Judiciary uh this week for decision-making and then the House companion bill is moving, so that's one vehicle that sort of addresses uh that particular issue. Uh and then the Senate Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs did report out the confirmation uh for the uh new director for the Department of Law Enforcement, which is in charge of sheriffs and law enforcement agency at the state. Uh he's a former major, Mike Lambert from HPD. Uh so we did recommend advising consent and his vote will go before the full Senate for confirmation. And then um lastly, in working in collaboration with Rep Takayama as well as Rep Chan in the area, Pearl City legislators, Senator Kino and Senator Waikai, uh we're able to uh thank Governor Green for his release of one point three eight million to renovate a medical classroom at Pearl City High School. So thank you to the governor for his release on that. And then I think I have, just wanna thank the residents, Ken uh and and your spouse for being here tonight and Tam for coming back again, you know, it's good to see you and sharing your concerns uh to the board and with us and, you know, collectively, we'll work together to see what we can do to address some of those issues, although they are a city. And then lastly, uh two things, if I may, Chair, is that um I just wanna say that Rep Takayama and I um are working to get appropriated one million dollars for emergency uh ingress and egress into Pacific Palisades um as the budget moves along, so uh that the hope is working with the Director of Transportation, Director Sniffin, and then working with the different agencies to see what we can do to provide emergency access road. And finally, I wanna extend my congratulations to the boys and girls of our city bowling team from Pearl City High School who uh won the state championships. Um so congratulations to the coaches and student athletes. Uh that concludes my report.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Senator Akino?
Um Aloha Chair Verre, Vice Chair Duran, Nathaniel, I'm sorry, Aloha Chair Verre and Aloha Vice Chair Duran, Board Members Nathaniel, Representative Senator Akino this evening. Um the office did send in um the reports and um with that being said, I will be standing by my report. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Representative Takayama's office?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Okay, since Board Member um Agard brought up Wanaloa Road as a cane haul road, the story I hear is that the two pedestrian overpasses the re- on Wanaloa Road, the reason they're so high is so that the cane haul trucks could be accommodated under them. That's not true.
Later, yeah, no, they were never there. There it was a full on cane haul road that we see dodged at the time.
Oh yeah, no, I remember the.
It wasn't built till later on.
Okay, anyway, that's a story I heard, so.
No, they weren't there.
Okay. Is that right? Board Member Lee? Yeah, yeah, I thought they were around a long time. Anyway, that doesn't have anything to do with it. Um we're about a third of the way through the legislature, uh as um Senator Elafante described. You know, we're hard at work, um number of bills still alive. Um Chair Verre brought up the idea, I mean, the point that um Hawaii and and every other state is being hurt by many of the um Washington DC administration's um actions. Uh one of the things the legislature's done is is given our Attorney General ten million dollars a year to be able to fight them in court. You know, every other day or so you hear about her joining with other attorneys general in other states, fighting this or that um. There's some losses, some wins, uh you know, for it, it's too early to say yet, but uh you know, they're they're hard at work in court, fighting for every dollar we can we can save and you probably hear from Chancellor Penarosa later on about the direct impact it's had on some of our uh college campuses in the UH system. Um as for my role as Chair of Health Committee, one of the responsibilities I take seriously is um overseeing how we spend our state dollars. Last week, you may have seen or or read in the press that we held an oversight hearing on the state hospital in Kanyohi that was built, that was opened about three years ago at a cost of a hundred sixty million dollars. Uh turns out most everything in there doesn't work or malfunctions, the roof leaks massively. Um costs for fixing up till now is um between thirty and forty million dollars on a hundred sixty million dollar project. So we're urging the Attorney General to go after the contractor in court, sue for all the um expenses we've incurred and all the damages we've had to fix. And um that's something she's seriously considering, but the you know, at a time when we're considering spending a lot of state money on projects like the new stadium, a new jail for um Oahu, we seriously have to get down our system of checking for defects in our construction projects. I am not fully confident that our people in the in DAGs, uh Accounting and General Services, which oversees all of our contracts, uh do a a good enough job of of inspecting before we accept these projects from the contractors, so that I think our legislature will be looking. Uh with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So based on what you just said, would it it be a little bit better, like you said, with DAGs, to maybe go with local contractors, you know, that who have gotten contracts from the state before, instead of going with outside contractors? Because um when we built the bakery, Love's Bakery, back in nineteen ninety on Middle Street, um I was working a couple Hulu at the time, switched us over. So we had mainland contractors come in, set up the equipment and, you know, I asked them, I said, eh, you guys not hanging around here until this thing is working? Oh no, we're just gonna drop it and go. So I said, you know, where's the warranty? You know, where's the guarantee? And I told him, I said, you know where your guarantee is? Your guarantee is only as good until you hop on a plane. And then you guaranteed down here, you looking at them, I'm it. So you know, with that being said, I've dealt with mainland contractors before and it's a hit and run kind of thing, so maybe in the future, that way, you know, if something goes wrong, we can go right down the street and grab them and say, eh, you got some stuff to do.
No, I understand what you're saying and you're perfectly right. Um the contractor in this case um is based in Colorado, but it's still operating here. You know, it's still bidding on state projects, which I find kind of hard to believe, but you know, as you know, the bulk of the work is done by subs and so even though the 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 warranty is a two-year warranty that state and the contractor are still fighting over. But uh no, I I take your point, but they basically go at the lowest bidder.
Thank you. Any any further questions?
Yes, uh again, briefly, um I hope you will fund the repairs for the convention center. Because I I think that's a good form of uh good form of tourism.
Sixty million dollars for the roof.
Well, yeah, I mean, uh the the numbers are huge, but uh yeah, that that we need, we we need that facility for for and for and for ourselves, thank you.
Totally agree, and in fact, I'm disappointed it wasn't done sooner.
Yeah, uh Terry Orton's a cousin of mine and she's a good lady.
Oh, and they're doing a good job.
Yeah, she's like a lot, there's a lot of stuff, I think uh Pack Fest was probably the uh, you know, uh at the top of the tier when they brought that one in for the Polynesian uh culture. So uh she's a good lady and I hope she gets what she wants and take care of that place.
Oh yeah, and the main thing is they're actually turning a profit.
All right, moving on. Thank you so much. Representative John?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair. Board Members, uh Corey Chan from the State House. So, let's see, I'll start my update with just, you know, echoing my colleagues about um just the uncertainty about what's gonna happen with our federal funding. Um you know, we've been asked questions all the time about what we think is gonna happen because we really don't know. Uh it's sort of kind of like a wait and see. Because until the actual, I guess, cuts or whatever, land reductions are gonna happen, um it's all a guessing game right now. So we're kind of bracing for some impact, but we don't know exactly where it's gonna happen and to what extent and how quickly it's gonna happen. So we're keeping an eye on that and just letting you folks know that we are looking at it, but you know, when it comes down to it, there's really big uh chunks of federal funding that pay for a lot of things like education and transportation. So things with the Department of Transportation, you know, a lot of those things are federally funded, so just keep an eye on that. Um I would like to note early in the that the delineators on Lahua Avenue and Fourth Street have been installed, they were installed a few weeks ago, so those are in to make that crosswalk a little safer. Uh and then, you know, with with what Representative Takayama mentioned, uh I have a new role in the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce and that's one of the things we're looking at. And that's one of the things we're looking at, too, is procurement. And what we've been seeing with especially these large projects, state projects, is that there's a lot of these LLCs or companies that are created for the sole purpose of bidding for a contract. And then what happens is, right after they build it, they dissolve. And so what we're trying to do is figure out a way to hold them accountable, because we see this a lot of times where, when they dissolve, the state and taxpayers are left holding the bag for all the repairs and all the construction defects. And that shouldn't happen, because, you know, we should get what we paid for. So that's one of the things we're trying to figure out a solution to it. You know, we're kicking around ideas of requiring some type of insurance. We're still working on that, but that's one of the issues we're trying to address with procurement. And then I'd just like to close with just, you know, sharing that Pro City Community Church celebrated 70 years. So just wanted to congratulate them and thank them for all the work that they do in their neighborhood with Sunset Memorial, with Lehuah Elementary School, and also with work on the Pro Harbor Bike Path. For that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Any questions? Anton.
No, pressed that by mistake, sorry.
All right, if no.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you. Representative Lachica.
Okay, hi, everyone. Can you see me? Hi, this is Ricky. Say hello. She wanted to come join my report. So, good evening, everyone. Trish Lachica, Mililani, Waipio, Corridge.
Can I bring my applesauce?
Yeah, I'm almost, almost done, baby. So as Rep Takayama, as Rep Takayama shared, we, the House introduced over 1,500 bills, over half are dead for the session, but we're still moving through. And I shared, I dropped in the, in the link, and hopefully it'll be uploaded in the Google Drive, my February newsletter. It should be in my, oh, it's in my, in my website, trishlachica.com, my February newsletter as well. But it includes the list of my February, I mean, in my newsletter, of my entire bill package. So thank you to all of you who have been supporting my bills. Several are still moving, but a few highlights, our school bus bills, the transportation options, which is a admin package bill with Hawaii Department of Transportation. This would make permanent GOV's emergency proclamation to allow for alternate transportation options, so motor coaches, mini buses, to be able to enable and use them to transport students in times of emergencies. So that one is still moving. The one that would treat student, make student transportation, treat student transportation as like, treated as critical infrastructure, like reforms contracts, though, if it doesn't get a hearing by this week, it may be in trouble. So if you guys wanna, you know, help advocate for that, that's House Bill 861. Also, I do have, House Bill 1231 is also moving. That is my bill that would prioritize the installation, I mean, the implementation of the red light camera program in school zones. So that's also supported by the Department of Transportation. And so the fines collected in the, in the red, in school zones, when you run a red light, would be deposited in the Safe Routes to School Program. And then, not quite related to the immigration issue, which is something, you know, I'm also, you know, very passionate about, but in the Education Committee, which is one of the committees I'm in, is we did, didn't quite move this year, but we did work on legislation that would have created a pathway for our J1 teachers. So, you know, we have a lot of, you know, teachers from the Philippines that really wanted to find a pathway for them to be able to stay here as they, you know, taught in the DOE. And so it was a, would have enabled them to get their licensing and be able to stay here, you know, for longer, I guess, than three years. So that was House Bill 439. So a bunch of bills still moving, and then Senate bills, too. And so, yeah, hopefully, you know, we get good opportunities to see some good legislation this year. Yeah, a lot of opportunities to also, you know, continue working with the community. One of the things that I'm, also I got involved in this year is advocating for school meals. So I also put in the chat, March 15th, I'll be speaking on a free Free School Meals for Keke Forum with First Lady Jamie Green. This is on March 15th. It's, I think, you know, with, not just, you know, our cost of living and everything happening with the administration, but currently, you know, our federal, I think, you know, our federal kind of rates for, I mean, our federal eligibility for free and reduced lunch is just not enough for our families here in Hawaii. So in order to be eligible for free and reduced lunch for our keke, you have to be earning 47,000, for a family of four, it's like $47,000 and below. And so if you make a dollar more than that, you have to pay for lunch. And we all know that that's, you know, not enough. And so, anyway, it's just something that we can do. Hopefully, you know, our hope is in this, at least for the Education Committee, is we can help at least raise and cover that gap. So at the very least, for our Alice families, at least our keke, they don't have to worry about, you know, having that meal. If that's the only meal they'll have for the day, at least we're helping to cover that. So something we're advocating for this year is at least helping to pay for that, for that school meal for those who need it the most. So one thing I'm helping out with, in addition to student transportation this year, is school meals. So that's it for my report. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, Chair Varey.
Yes, Trish, I did respond to HB 861. You got a new testimony just, I just posted. And I'll check on HB 1231 and 439 to help you out with those.
Thank you.
Definitely supporting it, as well as Corey Chan and Takayama and Elefante. I'm following their bills, too, trying to help them out. But thank you so much. Over to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Awang.
Yeah, hi, thanks, Representative Lachica. I like what you're doing with the schools and the lunches. And from what I've seen in the past, the school is working with local farmers. And I think at that point is where the legislature should take it a step further and seeing the condition, you know, with everything that's going on, that, you know, we need to start, you know, pushing the self-sufficiency in the islands all over the state, whether agriculture, cattle.
You know, certainly, I think this is part, we do have, we did pass legislation to, for local farm to school. So our, the mandate is that by 2030, we need to procure 30% of our, you know, ingredients, 30%, you know, locally by 2030. So it's just a win for our farmers, our win for the local economy. And I think we really, you know, wanna be able to get to that. I think the key is to really look at it, you know, regionally. Right now, our system just hasn't been able to match with the small farmers, because the way that the currently, like, the DOE system works is it's very centralized, right? And it, the procurement threshold is very high. It's like $100,000. So which small farmer can meet that procurement threshold, right? They can only produce at 15,000, 20,000, and smaller than that. So we're trying to make it so that we're meeting the small farmers where they're at. But no, absolutely, I think that's, that's one way that we should support our, our local economy is being able to, yeah, being able to source locally.
Yeah, and also, you know, our food source. You know, right now, we're in the midst of, you know, immigration and deportation. And who knows when the next set of vegetables, you know, will be coming from across the water. So if we, you know, start, you know, giving our farmers a little bit more leeway, giving them some breaks and everything, I think that will help, you know, with everything. You know, like, right now, it's eggs. Next thing, it might be milk. Next one is gonna be vegetables. So if we keep depending on outside, you know, imports, one day, the well is gonna go dry. So whatever we can do to self-sustain ourselves, that will be a better deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, can you hold? There's technical difficulties on my end.
Okay.
You don't need the camera on me. Mike.
Is Ed Casey's office here? Let's see.
About now. Oh, yeah, I can hear myself. I don't know where we got lost at.
Okay, question. Do we have questions for?
Well, it's, it's in regards to what's going on in Kanyoei, where they're planting ooloo trees and mango trees. And I think we could do that statewide, or at least island-wide, you know, to help produce more food and be more self-sustainable. See where that goes to, you know. What they're doing over there is great. I think we should incorporate that all over, because we're, I see nothing but weeds. You know, guys always talking about weed whacking around Cam Highway. Why don't we plant vegetables and stuff there? And so while they're weed whacking, they're harvesting. Something to think about, Mahalo.
Thank you. Sinestra Garcia there in the audience? No. Office of the Mayor.
Evening, Gina Bono, Director, Chief Engineer Designate of the Department of Facility Maintenance, City in Kanyoei, P'Anu, P'Anu. Vice Chair Duran, Chair Varey, and Board Members. Mayor's highlights from his newsletter. Hundreds attend a memorial service in Kakaako in honor of fallen firefighter Jeff Fiala in the line of duty. Mayor Langiardi and my respective cabinet members were sworn in into office last month for hopefully in four more years. A new 90-unit Bill 7 Affordable Housing Development breaks ground in Makiki as part of the mayor and Governor Green's initiative to tackle affordable housing. Reverses began on the seawall and walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki, near the Barefoot Beach Cafe. It was, it fell down maybe mid-last year, and it's going to be finally repaired and hopefully be completed in six months. And lastly, the Department of Parks and Recreation unveiled their new Opala truck that will be servicing the leeward waffle parks and beach parks to help with trash. And with that, I will open for any more questions that I may have.
I actually have a very quick follow-up. I don't know if you were at the last meeting. I was only at the meeting for a short time. And there was a report on our drive that mentioned DPP. And if I, if I get this wrong, please correct me. The DPP said there is no sustainable plan for IAA Pro City.
There is none. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that was a part of the report that we received. Is that correct? It's on our drive.
There is no system.
Is that, was that the report that you provided in writing?
I am not sure. I was supposed to follow up whether or not there was a sustainable plan.
It's the IAA Pro City Legible Community Plan, but I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. Just a question about the line striping on roads. Does that fall to you, or is that DTS?
It is, if we are restriping lines, that is under the purview of DFM, which is my department.
What if the lines are missing?
So I would suggest you go to dfmroads@p'Anu.gov and email us.
Okay.
But I will certainly take that.
So.
Information and address it accordingly.
Last month, you missed my little tirade about Waimano Home Road, Malka of Komomai Drive, and how the bus is pulling up onto the footpath. And there's no white line there to help the bus drivers understand that that is a footpath. And my young daughter had to go against traffic around the bus because her bike didn't fit between the bus and the wall. And so thankfully, working with Councilmember Okamoto's office, we got that stripe on the side of the road there. It's done already within the month. I'm so happy.
Likely DFM, yes.
But I was talking to some people last night at the town hall.
At her town hall?
Yep, and because there's no city bus going up Waimano Home Road to the high school, there's a lot of students, at least coming from Palisades, that are getting off at the intersection of Komomai and Waimano Home Road, and they're walking up Waimano Home Road. And we don't have a good footpath. I'm not gonna call it a sidewalk, because there's nothing that's really raised like a typical sidewalk, but we don't have a good footpath there. This morning, I took a run just straight up Waimano Home Road to see, and there's no lines to designate the edge of the road and the beginning of the little trails that do exist there. I think as long as we don't have busing to connect our high school to our communities, we should at least provide some guidelines for the drivers so that they are aware that they need to share that space, if we can. But I will go ahead and put a request in. I tried to do it on the 311, and there is nothing really.
DFM Roads@p'Anu.gov, and obviously, I've heard it, and it will, it is part of my agenda now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Is that on the left side or the right side of Waimano Home Road? The right side. The path is both sides. Yeah, yeah, no lines. Yeah, because I think, yeah, there is a path.
Going to the high school, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's actually above where Ho'olalea comes back onto Waimano Home Road. So that's above Komomai. And then from there, the rest of the way, and I do have. And then from there, the rest of the way, and I do have pictures that I took today. I could share with you.
Please do.
Um, there's no lines to.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Have a great month and I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
See you next month.
Yes, sir.
So they, uh, fence. I mean, the mountain. From the live. These accidents for past three months. Okay.
Hi, Jean Tom again. So in regards to the, uh, the fence hugging the mountain on Komomai going up to Palisades, it's been damaged severely. Um, I understand that fence was to help prevent falling rocks hitting cars or pedestrians. There's been like six car accidents on the Facebook page from, for the past three months already. And it's like, hey, how soon can we get that fixed?
See whose jurisdiction is if the fence is for fall mitigation. That is likely not the DFM. That is.
Because it's right after that guardrail that you were able to help fix. Yeah, yeah.
If it's to prevent rock falls, that's a little bit more involved. But I have it in my action items and I will certainly bring it up next month.
Thank you.
Mr. Sakamoto.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, um, thank you, Director. I just want to relay a message, if you can, to the mayor for doing Transit Equity Day. I emailed Director Roger Martin on the 31st of January to see if he can make a proclamation. And the mayor came through. That was with Civil Rights for Rosa Park in Alabama in 1957. Uh, and Civil Rights for Persons with Disabilities. So please lay my deepest appreciation for the mayor for doing that proclamation on February 4th.
I will do that, member Sakamoto.
Thanks very much. Joint Base Pearl Harbor.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, neighbors. I always want to say neighbors, so I'll say neighbors. Uh, Dave Hodges with Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. Uh, just a few updates for the sake of time. We'll boil it down to just a few things. Uh, we had a virtual webinar last night, training webinar on tank cleaning. So everything you didn't want to know about tank cleaning, we covered it. It's online, so you can see the recording and see what's going on with the tanks. Episode 16, Tank Closure Plan is the latest podcast dated last week. Uh, that one's up there as well. Uh, pressure washing of tanks seven and eight just about wrapped up for tank eight. In fact, I think it, it is for tank eight. I'm not completely sure, but I know that they're going to have to certify and inspect that tank. Uh, tank three and four soon to start de-gassing, which will start next week, I believe. And, uh, the next open house is on March the 12th. I'm losing my voice because I've got a cold. I'm so sorry. March the 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Caye Lagoon at the Los Banos Community Room. That's where we're going to be. Ms. Chris has got the region news.
Thanks, everyone. Just lower this. Yeah, I got it. I got it. Thank you. Um, so I'll make my report really short since we did submit it in writing earlier. Um, wanted to just highlight two things. Um, we are resuming ship tours. Uh, so these are, uh, we do small group tours of ships that are import. Uh, we do them about once a month. We've got one coming up on March 8th. I don't know what ship yet, but, um, we can accommodate a group of 20. Uh, so if there is interest in doing a ship tour, it, uh, it's a Saturday from nine to 11. And it's a really nice experience. You get to kind of go up and down the ship. Um, one of the sailors will walk you through, um, some of the features. Um, but if you've never been on a ship, it's a good opportunity to take a look. Uh, we are also doing white boat tours. So these are historic tours of Pearl Harbor. Um, and on the, on the white boats that go out to the USS Arizona Memorial. Uh, we just wrapped one up on Friday. It was a huge success. But if you have a larger group that is interested in doing a historic tour of Pearl Harbor, our historian narrates the tour. Um, and that we do every other month. Um, we don't have a date for the next one. But, um, if there is interest from anyone on the board, uh, let me know. We can send you more details on that tour. And, you know, we take keiki to Kupuna. Um, we try to leave out of the Patfleet Boathouse. So it's easy, you know, easy parking. Um, and it, it enables us to stay, um, on the water longer. So we usually, you know, head back about 5:30. It's a really nice tour. And then lastly, I wanted to do a shout out to Pearl City resident Leilani Nakashima. She was selected as the NAVFAC, um, civilian engineer of the year for 2025. So, uh, we featured her in our weekly newsletter, um, The Mo'olelo. So we did a nice profile of her. That's it for me. You.
What's up, Chris? Uncle Vic, Public Works. Next Pearl Harbor Rab Meeting is going to be April 16th at the Oahu Veterans Center in Foster Village and New Dry Dock 5. We just got finished pouring the sixth of nine concrete floors. And everything is moving forward on schedule. All the parts and pieces are prefabbed on Waipio Peninsula and will get barged over to the shipyard so we don't clog up the already clogged up traffic. And that's all good. That's all I have. Are there any questions for Brother Duna, Auntie Chris, or myself?
Manager.
Yes.
Mr. Juna. So in, uh, well, we talked about those crossing sign, those illuminated ones. And you're gonna try and see if you can find out who is the vendor for that? So we could relay it to the city.
We sent you. We sent you.
No, I, oh, I gotta.
I'll send it to you again. Maybe I'll send it to Chair.
So Chairman, uh, Beren and Vice Chair.
I sent that.
Oh, okay.
I sent it to, um, Barry. I have it.
I will ask Lawrence.
Send it, I'll resend it.
Yeah, I will ask Lawrence.
I got two vendors for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right.
And then Juna, in the long term.
Yes, sir.
What are going to be done with the tanks after they're decommissioned and cleaned out?
A lot of us have the same question. The, the poll was taken, if you remember, I can't remember the name of the company. It was a contractor with an Hawaiian name. Now that's the one. Uh, so all the input was taken from everybody, all the state residents that, that took the time to answer the survey. It's all been passed up. The decision's yet to be made. So we'll see hopefully soon. And in fact, we'll use that as a big news story once we do find that out because we want everybody, we get the same, that same question from every one of the boards that I attend.
Yeah, I mean, because they probably might not like what I'm about to say. But, you know, it, it would be a good source for non-potable water.
Non-potable water.
Yeah, all that rainwater that washes into the ocean.
Yeah, you're not, you're not the only one with that one. Uh, everything from golf courses and irrigation, that, that idea is out there. So we're hoping for something beneficial like that. Yep. Thanks. Great question. Thank you.
Trevor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, gentlemen, uh, yeah, thank you for all the things that you're working on. Uh, sorry I couldn't be there because I've got a bad bacteria infection in my throat. But, uh, I just want to say I apologize Rodney, if I didn't get that email to you. Vic, could you please send it to me again? Uh, I think one of the good things out of this, if you can give us that vendor, we'll see what the prices are. And our vice chair's got a great idea about trying to do some outreach to our community, big box stores to, uh, provide donations to the city to help with public safety. We might be able to expedite those lights coming in to help Gina Bono, uh, you know, with the initiative because they still got to put in the budget and everything. This helped expedite it for, for our gift to the city. So thank you so much. And for Chris, uh, regretfully, we have a conflict on the 8th of March. Uh, the Pearl City Community Association's got a bingo breakfast. Well, most of us will be there. Uh, but the next month after that, I would like to host our board on the next ship. And I'll hop pipe them over. Thank you. That's all I got.
Like path cleanup on the 19th of April, Saturday before.
Right, thank you so much. Leeward Community College.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Uh, Carlos Pena Loza, Leeward Community College's Chancellor. I have a couple of quick updates. I'm going to try to condense it, but some are important. Uh, Leeward Community College and actually all of the community colleges are going through our regional accreditation process this year, uh, which starts this March. Our regional accreditor is ACCJC out of WASC. They accredit all of the community colleges in California, Hawaii, and the Pacific Islands. Um, that process includes public comment period. And so if you go to our website on our main landing page, we have a public comment period where the public can comment for the regional accreditor to review comments about our institution. That's a requirement. We are beginning to communicate that to the community so that if anyone wishes to comment on, on Leeward Community College, you can. The direct link is right on our, uh, home, uh, website. Um, a couple of additional quick updates. We recently hosted UH, UH's new president, Wendy Hensel at Leeward Community College. She spent a full, full day in our Pu'u Loa campus. She spent time at our YNI MOCO Education Center and the Wahewa Value Added Product Development Center for Leeward Community College. Um, it was a great time for her to engage with students, faculty, staff, and members of the community to share a little bit of what's to come for the university, but also to address some of the comments that Representative Takayama mentioned about the federal executive orders and the impact that that may have on the university. Just from Burt's eye view perspective, the university carries close to $400 million a year in federal grants, much of which, uh, cover salaries that does circulate back, back into our local communities and our local economy. Uh, we don't know yet the, the full impact of everything that's happening, but stay attuned. We'll, we'll keep providing updates. For Leeward Community College, we generally have about $6 million in federal funds that are also tied considerably to salaries. Um, we just, uh, opened our newest art gallery exhibit. We have the Ho'ikaia Art Gallery right on our campus. And it's a host to a portion of the Hawaii Triennial for 2025. And that exhibition will run through May 4th. Um, again, the art gallery is open to the community and it is a free asset for the community. Bring your keikis, bring your family, uh, really exciting. Um, the next thing is our Leeward Theater, our friendly theater here right in our backyard. Uh, we host periodic events and we're still celebrating our 50th anniversary for the Leeward Theater. Um, March 15th and 16th, there is a hula production, Kupu Kupu with, uh, Patrick Makua Kani. And so again, if you're interested, you could connect with me directly or go to the Leeward Theater website. There are still tickets available and it's just an amazing production that celebrates a lot of who we are. Um, next, a couple of really important things that I wanted to convey to the general community. Historically, at the community colleges, the summer tuition has been a little bit more expensive than the regular tuition. The community colleges are establishing a new pilot where for the next three years, the summer tuition is going to be the same as that of the spring and fall semesters. The hope is to reduce some of the summer melt. A lot of students that are graduating high school, if they skip a heartbeat, they don't come to college. We want them to come to college in the summer so that we have them engaged all along. Uh, so that becomes really critical. There are still additional scholarships. And you probably hear it through the legislature and the news. Hawaii's Promise is an additional funding source. Our local students should not be paying for going to college through the community colleges right now because there are so many resources. So please encourage everyone to come through. There's a lot there to share out. And with that, I will end with just suggesting, I realize that most folks need to work multiple jobs to make ends meet here in Hawaii. Being a student at one of the community colleges opens up the door to working for the colleges as well. We employ hundreds of student employees that make good wages and we put them to work in the field that they are working toward. If they're working for computer science, they may be working in my help desk. And so they're gaining that momentum, that experience and, and bringing in some, uh, additional funding for themselves. And so we encourage everyone to apply and we will work with every student to try to make it work for them financially and so that they can be successful academically. And with that, I'll pause and see if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, no questions, but perhaps I should make some, uh, WASC commissary or WASC thing, but, um, I gotta ask, how's, how's the school bus certification? And, 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 and other things is I think you should build housing on your parking lots. And I think there's a fabulous opportunity to coordinate with your, your, your child, your offspring, uh, UH West Oahu, where they get the computer and they get the cybersecurity degree over there. And they get a certificate over at your place on how to splice, uh, fiber optic cables and stuff. So I, I, that's a great opportunity. I mean, I may have known, I have, I have PhD, but I'm also a aircraft mechanic. Say aircraft mechanic. So great opportunities there.
I also am a graduate of HCC Community College Machinist Program, which I kind of, uh, I miss them because I had some great teachers over there at HCC. But how much of, uh, trades do you folks teach over there?
At Leeward?
Yeah, at Leeward.
So, so at Leeward, we, we divide our programming into career and technical, which is hands-on. Uh, and then our transfer pathway or our typical associate in arts degree. Um, we used to be about 75% transfer. So the students that wanted to end up at Manoa, Hilo, or West Oahu, we're now closer to 40% being in the trades. Um, and, but the numbers are a little bit deceptive because we offer a lot on the workforce side that is non-credit, including in the allied, allied health professions, integrated industrial technologies, some areas of like billing and coding, uh, that don't show up in our metrics because those are not academic programs leading to degrees. Um, and so to give you an idea, we currently have about 6,000 students on the credit side. We have close to 2,000 others in the applied professions, in the applied workforce space. And we're continuing to grow those. Right now, with the food security challenges and supporting agriculture, those are some areas that we are expanding considerably to build agtech and bringing in technicians so that we don't have to ship our technicians every now and then when our equipment breaks.
Exactly. Yeah, I, because it was, uh, I seen, you know, an article in the news about the engineering program at UH. And that machine shop over there, you know, that was started by Mr. Nap. You know, it, it's unbelievable. So I was thinking to myself, you know, why don't we have it over here? Because if I'm not mistaken, that engineering program is also accredited course. Yeah.
So, so ju- just to add to that, in partnership with the College of Engineering, we were, did develop the Integrated Industrial Technologies Program or Mechatronics, which is one of the programs that has been feeding the workforce for the real technicians and folks that have been, uh, growing in that space. And so, uh, we do have the programming. We're always a well-kept secret. I try to share the, the information, but we, we are, we're just trying to build more momentum and getting more of the word out.
Yeah, there is a lot of opportunity out there, especially with you guys going into like agriculture. You're going to need technicians for your equipment. And, uh, uh, back stateside, there are also high schools that have become machinists and mechanical programs where they actually fix the farmer's tools. So that, you know, like the machinist program, it was unreal.
Yep.
Great job, Carlos. You go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. All right, it's 9:30. So let's see if we can get through the last three items relatively quickly. Pearl City Library.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll try to make it quick. So the library will be closed on March 26th in observance of Kuhio Day. And I'm just going to mention a couple of our programs. One of them is our beginner Tai Chi class on March 12th, Wednesday at 9:30 AM. And another one is our, um, ARP program. It's called Disrupt Aging Adventures in Retirement. And this one's called Chasing Hemingway from Kalihii to Mount Kilijimanjaro. And this one's called Chasing Hemingway from Kalihii to Mount Kilijimanjaro. So if you're interested, please call the library to register for the ARP program on that's March 19th at 10:30 AM. We have a lot of other programs and if you're interested, please check out our website. You can see what programs we're having at the library and you can contact us to register. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, if not, Board of Water Supply.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board Members and Pearl City community. Last month, one main break on January 19th. There's a 12-inch pipe near 98-512 Comahau Place. This month's announcement is the Water Waste Hotline. If you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know so we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. Your part water waste, you can visit our website, portofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. Email contact us at hbws.org or you can give us a call at 808-748-5041. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious unlimited water supply. Water is life. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, if not, moving on to associations, Pearl City community events.
No updates, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Moving on to the minutes, are there any changes or amendments to the minutes? If not, the minutes are approved as circulated?
Oh, wait, we need to move. Move in second.
Oh, we don't. Okay. You can actually just approve minutes if no more changes. That's you just do it as circulated, but I can share that with you. It's in Robert rules. Is there any other announcements or actions that we need to take?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say one thing before in the night. About two, three weeks ago, a gentleman passed away. This gentleman, in my opinion, was probably one of the greatest representatives out of Pearl City area. And on every holiday, when I was a young gentleman about 10 years old, I would see this man holding a sign saying, Happy Mother's Day, Happy Father's Day, Happy Easter, Merry Christmas. And this man was a representative of the state legislature and his name was Nobu Yonamini. And he passed away about four weeks ago. And if there was any legislature in Pearl City, in my opinion, he was the man. So I'd just like to give him a shout out and for being one heck of a Pearl City resident. Thank you.
You're muted.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.